I don't have to tell you things are bad. Everybody knows things are bad. Everybody's out of work or scared of losing their job. The dollar buys a nickel's worth. Banks are going bust. Shopkeepers keep a gun under the counter. Punks are running wild in the street and there's nobody anywhere who seems to know what to do and there's no end to it. The air is unfit to breathe and our food is unfit to eat. We sit watching our TVs while some local newscaster tells us that today we had fifteen homicides and sixty-three violent crimes, as if that's the way it's supposed to be. We know things are bad, worse than bad. It's like everything everywhere is going crazy, so we don't go out anymore. We sit in the house and slowly the world we're living in is getting smaller and all we say is please at least leave us alone in our living rooms. Let me have my toaster and my TV and my steel belted radios and I won't say anything. Just leave us alone. Well, I'm not gonna leave you alone. I want you to get mad. I don't want you to protest. I don't want you to riot. I don't want you to write to your congressman because I wouldn't know what to tell you to write. I don't know what to do about the depression and the inflation and the Russians and the crime in the street. All I know is that first, you've got to get mad. You've got to say, "I'm a human being." God damn it. My life has value. So, I want you to get up now. I want all of you to get up out of your chairs. I want you to get up right now and go to the window, open it, and stick your head out and yell, "I'm as mad as hell and I'm not gonna take this anymore."
This is the Sunday night episode of The Political Spotlight. It is episode five thirty-seven and things are a little bit different in here. We've changed up some audio stuff, so I'm gonna need everybody to let me know tonight. If you notice any difference in the audio, if it sounds better, sounds worse, if I'm quiet, if I'm loud, if it changes or whatever, you're gonna have to let me know that. Kate's on the monitor, I'm on the monitor. We've got some difference in sound here and everybody knows how that freaks me out, so just bear with me and let us know if we change. That would be fantastic. So, okay, we've got some interesting things to talk about tonight. We're gonna get right into it here early, so if you would, go ahead, smash that like button, get that out of the way, do what you can there, get that going, so we can be done with that and... So, I know that everybody is probably just absolutely done listening to information about the city of Muncie. And, oh, I can tell what the difference is in the audio. I know right now. So, used to, you wouldn't be able to hear me breathe. You wouldn't be able to hear that so much. I gotta fix that with the compressor. Okay, well, all right, we'll deal with that tomorrow, but I know what that is now. Just bear with it tonight. Sorry, it's gonna be a little bit more breathy tonight. I apologize. We'll try to not have that so much like that, but I apologize. Anyways, so, we're gonna... I told you guys on Thursday night, Friday night rather, Friday night was our last show. We didn't do a show Thursday, we did it Friday. I told you that that was the last bit of new information pertaining to the Muncie City Council meeting tomorrow. Well, I lied. Just like the city of Muncie, they threw a curveball and there is a little bit of new information and we're actually going to cover that in the second half of the show. First half of the show, we're gonna be talking about something that is crazy. It is something that affects everybody, so if you would, smash that like button. If you're new to the show, go ahead, hit that subscribe button. You can subscribe for free. It does not cost you anything. And that would be lovely. So, the first part of the show, I'm gonna bring somebody up here in a little bit. If you read the description, you know who it is. You're all familiar. If you haven't read the description yet, you're gonna find out here in just a few moments. It's a good friend of mine, somebody that's been on the show a lot, but it's not been here for a minute. I probably gave you guys a little bit of clues. Everybody's gonna be like, Brandon, Brandon. Nope, nope, the other one. And we're gonna talk to him in a second about a very strange story. A very strange story. Yeah, I see that, Alva. Out of Indianapolis, Indiana. No, not the Sanchez story. That's a strange story too. Although it kind of relates, it's kind of strange. We're gonna be talking about an NFL story, a story that deals with the NFL, the National Football League. Everybody knows that I'm a major, major sports fanatic. We're gonna be talking about that and we're gonna be talking about another issue that's on top of everybody's mind right now. It's been going on for a while. It's First Amendment issues. And it surrounds the NFL. It surrounds a lot of hot-button topics right now. It surrounds the NFL. It surrounds the federal Customs and Immigration Enforcement, ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE. And it involves our good friend, Audie Barber, so we're gonna bring him up here in just a second. I want you guys to think about this from a common sense perspective. And before you make an opinion one way or the other on this, I want you to consider that words and terminology and where you're at and how... You can have the same thing happen in different locations and it can have other outcomes. So, I want you to consider that. We're gonna jump in here, we're gonna get straight to it, and then when we're done with this, when we're done with this, we are going to talk about Muncie and maybe Audie will stay around. I don't know if he'll have to get to bed for work or not, but we're gonna go ahead and pull him up. Without any further ado, we're gonna bring Mr. Audie Barber up.
Welcome, everybody. I haven't seen you guys in a while. I've been watching, a lot of times I'll watch and just don't say much. Hard to believe, right?
Yeah, right. If only you wouldn't say much, you wouldn't be on tonight.
Right, exactly. Where do you wanna start at, Christopher?
Well, okay, so, for the people that don't know, you might just give them a little bit of a rundown, like who are you, what's your deal? Tell people that might not know who you are what the deal is.
My name's Audie Barber. I've ran for Muncie City Council a couple of times. As a Democrat, I am a Democrat. I've never switched tickets. I will not switch tickets. I've always been a Democrat. With that being said, I'm fifty-five years old. I love my Indianapolis Colts football. I go to football games all the time. And this time was a little different, so, the tenth councilman, yes.
Yeah, the tenth councilman. And it's pretty safe to say, I think that people know you, know that you're a... Hold on here a second. Let me see if I can do this. I don't know if I have this. I do. Yeah, I do. Hand claps for Audie. Welcome to the show, Audie. Like every time I've ever interviewed you for something big, I've always been like, "Don't say Audie Murphy. Don't say Audie Murphy. Don't say Audie Murphy. My good friend."
I was named after Audie Murphy. He's the most decorated hero of World War II, so we'll put that out there and let everybody know that he fought hard for our country.
For our freedoms.
And our freedoms and our right speech, and he killed two hundred and sixty-some Germans in one day by himself to hold him off his platoon, to save the rest of his men in his platoon that were already injured. So, and he done it by himself, so, pretty good job. Well, not underwater, but... Yeah, he, you know, all the...
This Audie could have doubled that. That's nothing. Look at that scar on his face.
Yeah, yeah, look at that scar. And he was a movie star. Up in nineteen seventy-one, he died in an airplane crash.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the story.
So...
And I'm a smoker, folks, so there is smoking on this panel, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm getting, I'm getting secondhand smoke from both sides. I'm getting it. Kate's smoking away at the bottom. Audie's smoking away at the top. Okay.
But anyhow, you want me to get to the story?
Yeah, right. So, the other thing is, it's safe to say that Audie is just a good-natured person. He's the best person in the world. So, I'm gonna tell a couple of things here because I've known Audie for about six or seven years now, and so I wanna say this. There are a lot of people in my life that I know that I believe. If a lot of people came to me and said, "Hey, I have a story to tell you," I would listen, I would believe, it would make sense, and we'd be good to go. Most of you, I'm gonna believe what you say. Some of you, I'm gonna take it with a grain of salt, but there's... And not, I'm not talking about like my brother, because my brother would, I know, would tell me. My other brother would, you know. I'm not talking about family. I'm talking about of my friends and acquaintance. There are like two men, men, that I know that if they tell me something, however outrageous, however crazy, whatever the story is, low, up, happy, sad, down, up, whatever, whatever they say to me, I don't need to do any further checking. I do do further checking and whatever, just because that's the nature, but I know that when these two men tell me things, it's the God's honest truth, and that is this man here in front of you, Audie Barber, and Brandon Rudd, the other Brandon. And so those two people, I know they detest liars. Both of them have this thing that lying is not a thing that they do. They are not liars. Audie is a good guy. He is or could be, if he needs to be, depending on what the situation is, maybe a little bit of a rough-in if he has to be, but Audie is a very good-natured person, would help you, give you the shirt off his back, do anything he could, and from time to time, you've been known to be a little bit of a shit talker if need be, if the situation arises.
If need be. And I like to joke and have a good time, and I don't know any strangers.
Yeah, yeah, no, he's related to everybody. He is literally related to everyone, okay?
Well, somewhat, but, you know. Like I said, my wife says I talk too much in public to people that I don't know, and I shouldn't do that. That's my personality. I don't know a stranger and I'll cut up and I have a good time with all of them. I mean, you know.
That is very, it's very true. So, that's just, the people that don't know, I just wanna set this because we're gonna, what we're gonna talk about, people might be like, "Well, there's gotta be more to the story." And folks, I'm gonna let you know, everything that we talk about, everything that we talk about, I am going to work on. I can't, I couldn't do anything. I've reached out to people to verify tonight. It's gonna take me a couple of days to be able to further verify these things and get some things. I will get it. We will produce these documents. We'll do whatever we can. I'm gonna try to get video, whatever, da-da-da-da-da.
Okay. Now, guys, just remember, you can't make this shit up.
No.
You can't set and write this down for a movie at all, okay?
So, you go to the NFL game today in Indianapolis, the Colts game. It was the Colts versus the Raiders, and I thought that, it's been, look, this is how much of a sports fanatic I am. I thought they were still Oakland. I found out today that it's the Las Vegas. Yeah, Las Vegas. Now, a little bit of information that maybe people know or don't know, when you go to the stadium, a lot of people think it's like, "Oh, that's just the NFL stadium" or whatever. It's not. The stadium belongs to the city, to the state of Indiana. It's connected to the Indiana Convention Center. Lucas Oil is there, and there have been a lot, a lot, a lot of tax dollars that have gone into funding the stadium and that whole deal.
And we're still paying it.
We're still paying it.
Every time you go out and buy some fast food or something, you pay it every time you buy food.
Yeah, food and beverage tax, absolutely. The state of Indiana, the city of Indianapolis, has fought and fought and fought and fought and fought to do everything they could to keep the Indianapolis Colts where they are, to keep them happy, to keep them there, and do whatever they could.
Right.
The stadium tomorrow morning is just gonna be a stadium connected off to the convention center, what it is. Twenty-four hours before a football game, so if, what time was the kickoff today?
One o'clock.
The game was at one o'clock, so twenty-four hours before 1:00 p.m. today. So, at 1:00 p.m. yesterday, the NFL takes over the stadium and everything connected to the stadium. They bring in their own security. Now, they do not have security. They have a company called Protection Plus, and Protection Plus hires licensed certified police officers in the state of Indiana. I mean, men and women who are capable of making arrests both on and off duty, people who are capable of putting you in handcuffs, people who are capable of taking your freedom, people who are capable of taking your life by shooting you if they so choose or whatever, if the reason calls. So, it's not like, it's not like a security officer. It is a certified police officer, and that's gonna be very important to the story here. So, you go to the game today, you go down there, and it was just you. It was a day you were gonna go down there, have a good, you know, kind of a relaxed day. You've been working hard, you paid, and you, I don't, you don't have to tell us, but kind of what was the...
I ended up spending about three hundred and some dollars because a couple, I guess I should have turned around and went home when I found this out. I bought some tickets on, I bought one ticket on Facebook and I sent the lady the money and I got ghosted, so.
Oh, my God.
So, the second person I bought a ticket from, from Facebook, did the exact same thing, so I lost a couple hundred bucks right off the bat, okay? It's been a bad day.
Holy shit.
So, I get down there and there's a scalper out there and I buy a ticket off scalper, and it's a good ticket. So, I'm late. I'm late getting to the game. The game's already started, and I find my seat. I sit down, okay?
Pause. There's no way Megan can say, "Ticket for what?" What do you mean, "Ticket for what?" You've not been hearing us talk about the Colts, the NFL, the Colts game. Are you kidding? A ticket for the Ballerina Show down... All right, so you get in late. How far?
It ended up being a Ballerina Show, or a, shut up, Audie. So, I'm sitting there, we're watching the game.
Okay.
And there's, you know, a bunch of people around me. I'm kidding with this one guy, "Hey, Dad, you buying beer?" Hey, Dad, and I don't drink.
Yeah, you're a teetotaler, like I am. You don't drink.
And then the cotton candy man came through. I said, "Hey, Dad, you buying us cotton candy?" And he laughed. He said, "With your money, son, with your money," and, you know, having a good time. And this guy in front of us, he was, he had a Raiders jersey on. And we was cutting up with him. He was the only one there with Raiders jersey on in that area. I was cutting up with him, you know, how people, you know, ham it up with each other.
Yeah, just kinda sportsmen, like, "Oh, you know, we're gonna beat you. You're gonna beat us," that, just kinda back and forth.
The Raiders was all sides, and I said, "All sides," da-da-da-da-da-da, and they said, "Yeah, all sides, ten-yard penalty," and he just, you know, everything was cool. And then, you know, he kept talking and stuff. I said, "Just be careful." I said, "ICE may be out front waiting on you when you're done."
Okay, now, so, just back up here. So, you said ICE, and you're just being stupid, just joking around. You said, "Just be careful. ICE might be outside waiting for you when you're done." Meaning, again, Immigrations Customs Enforcement, and of course, it's a big topic right now because everybody's talking about them being around and arresting people, people who are illegal. People are like, "Oh, they're arresting Americans," or, you know, there's big debate about that. And for the record, the guy that you said this to, how old a guy was this guy?
He's probably twenty-five years old or so. He's Mexican descent, but he spoke fluent, yeah, but he spoke very fluent English, so.
Okay.
I knew the guy was born here in the United States.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and, okay, and so, first comment, kinda rude really, sure. Is it something that everybody would have said? Probably not. Would I have said it? I don't know, whatever. And after you said it, then what happened?
The guy was upset. He, you know, started getting hot-headed. He was drunk.
Okay.
And he kinda got, yep, and he kinda got a little hot-headed, so I said, "Hey, look, man, I apologize. I didn't mean nothing by it. It was just a joke."
Okay.
And I said, "Just let it go and watch the football game."
Okay, so you did apologize and say like you didn't mean to offend him and it was just a joke, you know, just, I was just shit talking and I said something I shouldn't have said, whatever, and so, and did he have anybody with him?
He had his, he had his girlfriend and another guy with him.
Okay, okay. How were they acting?
They were cool. They, I mean, the one guy said, "Well, you apologize. He should calm down," and his girlfriend told, he says, "You've gotta calm down," because he just kept going on and on and on and on and on, and I just overlooked it. And his girlfriend kept telling, said, "You need to calm down. They're gonna throw us out of here." Well, in about five minutes, the security came down and asking to...
You need to be careful because it was the...
Now, wait a minute. Now, wait a minute. There's police and security.
Okay, so, but that's what, that's what I was asking you earlier. The person that come down to get you, did they have a, came?
The one that come down to get him, the first person to come down got him and his, and his two people. One was security and one was a police officer.
Okay, so what I'm getting at is there was a person there with a badge and a gun or in a uniform? Which one? Were they in uniform? Okay, okay, okay.
They were in uniform with their badge and their gun on, and then they got the one guy that's wearing the yellow coat that says "Security" on them.
Okay, yeah.
And then next thing I know, there was two or three other police officers showed up and they escorted him out of there.
Okay, okay, okay.
No, I did not.
Yeah, no, right.
No, I did not.
It was just that comment. There was no other comment?
No other comment.
Or anything of any point? And I wanna, I wanna, again, because there's a couple of people that said like, "Well, it's kinda racist." Look, you can make that determination, and maybe at the end of it, everyone's like, "Well, it was a racial..." Look, I'm, I told Audie when he told me this. There was a racial undertone to the comment, of course, but the thing is, you could have said the same comment to a Ukrainian, you could have said it to a German person, you could have said it to anyone, and it's a statement. I mean, it's not a racial undertone if you say, "Hey, you know, be careful. Law enforcement's out front," or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Or be careful your mom was out front.
The, yeah, right. The point being is, okay, maybe there was a kind of a, just a in-the-moment dumbass kinda racial undertone to it, and you admitted, and you said, "Hey, sorry for my comment. I didn't, I apologize."
It was just a joke. I don't mean nothing by it. It was just a joke. I apologize. And I said it three times.
Okay, okay, and so, and the other thing I want people to know here is, so, as we move forward in the story, we have to figure out. So, can we, in America, be, we, this has been a big thing after the Charlie Kirk deal, people getting fired for comments and all of this. Can you make comments? And should you be fired? Should you not be fired? What's the situation? And I wanna be very clear that I'm a First Amendment absolutist, okay? You can say whatever you wanna say. First Amendment protects people from the government. It doesn't protect people from your employer or from this or that, so...
I'm a Democrat. I'm a Democrat. Registered Democrat, run as a Democrat. I'm a Democrat. I'm not a far-leftist, but I'm a Democrat.
Right, right, so you're not, yeah, yeah, okay. So, all right, then, he's taken away. Why did he get taken away?
Because he kept going on. After I apologized three times, he kept going on and calling a big scene like he was wanting to whip my ass or something.
Did you call the police?
No, I did not.
Security?
No, I did not.
Did you alert anybody from the NFL?
No, I did not.
Did you alert anybody? Did you tell anybody about this? So, you did not contact and say, "Hey, I want this guy removed," or "I need this guy to be removed." Okay, how did that come about? Do you know how that came about?
I don't know. I don't know. I'd say one of the other fans there had went up and got security.
Someone else said, "Hey, I think something's going on down here."
Yeah.
Now...
Because the guy was being pretty, he was being loud and obnoxious. "You fucking white people this, we fucking white people that."
Okay, so, then it went back to racist bullshit. Yeah, it went, like technically, it went racial both sides then. You know, you said you're...
Well, no, 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 because mine wasn't racial. It was a joke. It was a joke, and I laughed about it, and I didn't, I didn't call him anything out, just because I said ICE is out, ICE might be out front waiting on you. Maybe I was warning him in advance that I seen ICE out there or something. You don't know.
Right, right, okay.
I apologize. Straight up, I apologize. I said, "Look, dude, I'm sincere."
Yeah, it's not like, it's, and that's very important too here, that people need to understand this. It's not like you went home and there was this big uproar and people tried to get you fired, and then you're like, "Hey, I'm sorry because I got caught." In the moment, you're talking, and I can tell you, I can tell you, from Audie, I can, I can tell you, when Audie is in the wrong, Audie will step up and say, "Hey, I shouldn't have done that. I, you know, I went too far, did this or whatever." I can tell you, Audie will do that. He's done that in the past, and so I believe every bit of that. So, in that moment, you apologized to him and you said it, but he wasn't taking it. So, police, security come down there, they take him out of there for some unknown reason. What happens next?
Well, we're standing there watching the football game, sitting there watching the football game, and his buddy, his buddy's name was Anthony. That's all I got out of it. He said, "Man, he's drunk as hell." He says, "We do that shit all the time at home and everything's cool. He's just drunk today and took it the wrong way, and I know you apologized three times. I wanna apologize for his behavior, da-da-da-da-da." I said, "It's cool, man. We're fine. Let's just watch the game."
Okay, so, so everybody else just went back and...
Started watching the game again. Next thing I know, a police officer comes up and asks me, motions me over to him and says, I said, "What's going on?" He said, "Were you involved with this racial slur?" I said, "Racial slur?" I said, "I never said a racial slur." I said, "Here's what I said to him." He said, "Well, I need you to come up to the office with me." So, I proceeded to the office. We got up to the area and he told one of the security guys, he said, "Watch this guy a minute." And he went, proceeded back down because he asked me who else was involved, and I told him. He went down, tried to look for him, and he came back up, and so we proceeded to the office.
Okay.
Well, he handed me off to another police officer, and this police officer escorted me to the, to the security office.
And what's anybody, what's anybody sounding at this point? What's anyone saying to you at this point, rather?
Not much, not much. I said, "What the hell's going on?" He said, "Well, you made a racial slur." I said, "I never made a racial slur. Here's what I said." I said, "Hey, man, you know, what I said," and...
Go on.
So, they continued to escort me to the, to the office. So, I got in the office, and this guy was in there sitting down, telling his side of the story and act like he was crying and stuff.
You guys were in like, in real life, like the principal's office?
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So, they asked me for my ID. I says, "If you're kicking me out, why do you need my ID? Just kick me out." "Well, we got paperwork to do." "Okay, here's my ID." I laid my phone on the desk. And this guy got up and started toward the end of the hallway there, and he started running his mouth, and I said, "Well, I'll be out front in a few minutes, it sounds like." And so, the security guy or the police officer, well, he wasn't dressed as a police uniform. He was, had a blue shirt on, but he had a badge and a gun on, and he grabbed me up. He says, "You're not gonna insult or threaten people in front of me. You're going in this box." I said, "What are you talking about?" "I'm blocking you in this cage." I said, "Well, I hadn't done anything wrong, buddy. Why are you throwing me in this box?" So, he throws me in an eight-by-twelve or eight-by-ten padded cell. Before he throws me in there, I said, "I wanna get my phone." He said, "No, your phone's all right." And he goes to open the door and the door swings out. So, as he's swinging the door, I take a step back, and a couple of the fucking police officers grab me by the arm and try to, you know, armbar me. I said, "What are you doing?" Everybody knows what armbar, tried to slam my arm behind my back and shit. I pulled away. I said, "What are you doing, dude?" I said, "I'm backing up so he can open the fucking door."
Yeah.
So, they open the door and I go in there, and I tell them before they close the door, "Hey, man, I really gotta go to the bathroom. I really gotta go to the bathroom." So, I'm sitting in this...
So, you're like in a quote-unquote jail at this time.
I'm in jail at this time.
You're in a jail.
I asked him, I asked him before he put me in there, "Are you arresting me?" He said, "No, you want me to?"
What, at, what at this point were they telling you you were detained or under arrest for?
Racial slur.
So, you're not under arrest for threatening, you're not under arrest for intimidation, you're under arrest for racial slur. Now, I know...
I wasn't arrested. No, Chris, no, Chris, no, 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 no.
No, I know.
I was not arrested.
Listen, were you free to go?
No, they kidnapped me. No, they kidnapped me.
Okay, so wait, so yeah, so you were under, you were under a custodial arrest. I don't care what bullshit they called it. You were not free to go to McDonald's.
No.
You were not free to go to your home. You were not free to go down and take a piss. You were in a custodial arrest. So I don't care what they call it.
In a eight by ten room.
Yeah, right. With, with, with police officers that you couldn't leave.
Correct.
Could you, could you exit the door?
No, they had it locked.
So, so.
They had the fucking thing closed. I was in a fucking jail cell.
So you were under arrest.
I was under arrest. I was in a fucking jail cell.
Absolutely. So while we're continuing to tell the story, I'm gonna quickly go on here. And I know the answer to this, but just, just so we're clear. I'm gonna go on here and I'm going to go to the Indiana General Assembly, look up criminal code, cause it's, I, it's been a long time since I was a police officer. But when I was, I don't remember the criminal code for racial slur, but I'm gonna look for it, but continue telling your story.
Okay, so I'm in this ten by twelve padded room. Only thing in there is a couple of cameras up in the corner and a fucking stool set on, okay? And I told him before they closed the door, can I go to the restroom? I'm not being hateful. I'm not being argumentative with these people. I just ask questions. Why do you need my ID? Well, we're gonna throw you out of the uh, out of the game. Okay, here's my ID. I handed it to him. And uh. So as they're closing the door, I told him I gotta piss. So I'm in there, twenty minutes, I knock on the door. And this guy beside me, he drunk on hell in, in a cell beside me. And he's raising all kinds of hell and they're trying to do everything they can to kiss his ass because he's saying, you guys are being racist. You're being racist. But anyhow, I knocked on the door very politely, said, hey, I really need to go to the bathroom. Can you let me go to the bathroom, please? No answer. So I wait about five minutes. I knock on the fucking door again. Can you please let me go to the bathroom? I've really gotta go to the bathroom. No response. So you gotta remember, this is a padded cell, okay? And I pounded on the door pretty hard. So they've got the handle and they got the lock. And they're not padded. So I beat on the lock and the handle. I said, can you please let me go to the bathroom? I'm about to pee my pants. Okay? Please let me go to the bathroom. And it's some of your friends that, uh, you probably know them, Catherine. But anyhow.
Real quick, real quick, I, I wanna ask you, cause there's people, there's apparently new people coming in all the time. So I want to just be, be clear. You're not having to like use the bathroom because you had been drinking. Are, are, you don't.
No, 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 I don't drink. I, I haven't drank in three or four years. And if I do, I may drink one beer.
Right. For the record, had you drank a beer down there?
I have not drank in over three years. So no, I have not had any alcoholic beverages for quite a while.
Okay, alright.
So. But I got some medical issues. And if I gotta piss, I gotta piss. Okay? So thirty minutes goes by. So I look up and I see them cameras. And I look down on the floor and there's a fucking drain in the floor. Okay, so I stand up like this, Chris. Stand up like this, my back's facing the cameras. And I reach around and I act like I unzip my pants.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
And I'm standing there like this.
Yeah.
You know, like I'm pissing.
Yeah.
Next thing I know, the fucking door opens.
Yeah.
Cause I'm pissing in the drain? You think I'm pissing in the drain? No, I'm not that disrespectful. I'll piss my pants and then I'll go buy a pair of pants. They didn't know that.
Right.
So they let me out to use the bathroom at that point.
Ah, no way.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so after that happens, I come out and they asked me to have a seat. So I sit down. And uh, I said, so you guys are kicking me out of here. You've locked me in a cell. And you're kicking me out of here.
How long were you in the cell?
About thirty minutes.
Okay.
About thirty minutes.
Okay.
And I said, for, for saying, for, for me using my First Amendment right, freedom of speech. And this one officer spoke up and he says, this is a private, this is a private property. I said, no, it's not. I said, taxpayers paid for this. This is public. No, this is private property. Da, 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 da. So I give, she gives me my ID back and she um. Gives me a piece of paper, says I'm evicted from the Lucas Oil Stadium premises for the next twenty-four hours. That I can't be back on for twenty-four hours.
Okay.
And they escorted me out of the building. Well, I got names and stuff before I left. And one of them was a William um.
Billy Ingles.
William Ingles. He said, my name's William Ingles. I said, is that Bill? He said, no, it's William. I said, okay.
No, it's Billy.
You know my brother? I said, you know my brother? He said, who's your brother? I said, Carl Barber. Yeah, I know Carl. Have him call me. He used to work down here for me and he knows what's going on. You ask him. Well, I asked my brother and my brother says it sounds to me like they fucked up. So.
So, so what, what did they tell you? What, so, alright, ba- back up, cause I, I do want to cover this, cause so, alright.
Uh, so, hey, let me, let me, let me finish up real quick.
Okay.
So we was walking outside. He escorted me out the doors. He escorted me all the way out to the fence and made sure I exit. Make sure I exited the uh, the premises. So I turned around, I said, so if I called you a fucking pig, would that be racist?
Yeah.
And he said, yeah, yeah, it could be. He said, you, well, before I got out to this position. He told me, you could be arrested for saying uh. For saying that stuff to people. I said, for saying, watch out, Ice might be out front. Uh, watch your back or Ice may be out front waiting on you. I can go to jail for that? I said, there ain't no way. I said, I'm talking about.
To that, did he say?
He said, yes. He said, yes, you can. I said, because I'm talking, I said, because I'm talking about federal. Employees that are, that are police officers? And I tell somebody that I can be arrested and go to jail for that? He said, yes, you sure can. It's a racial slur.
You, did he tell you? Okay, so again, he's saying that you can be arrested for quote unquote racial slur. I will tell you, in the meantime here, uh, there is no, in the state of Indiana, there is no crime. Um, for, it's called racial slur. Um, and so I just want to be really clear here. Someone can walk up, can, can just walk out to the middle of the street. And just start yelling the N-word.
Yes.
And you cannot be arrested.
Arrested for it.
You will not be arrested for that.
You can call a cop a pig.
You can call a cop a pig, you can flip a cop off, F you, do whatever, the whole, the whole nine yards, you can say.
You can call a white man a honky.
Yep, you, there's, there is, now, you might be an asshole for doing it. It might be racist, it might be racist, you, maybe it was, whatever. But you can't be arrested for it. You can't be arrested for being an asshole. You, you're, you're allowed to be an asshole in America.
Correct.
People can think you're an asshole or you could say, hey, I messed up or whatever. You know, I'm a good person, but this was stupid or whatever. But you can't be arrested for it.
Bottom line is, Chris. We have got to bring this country back. From the far, far, far reaches of the left and the right. It's gotta come back to the middle where people can get along. And if somebody says, hey, you got a white beard or hey. You're looking a little gray or hey, ISIS may be what, ICE may be waiting out front for you. But they don't fucking get pussy whipped and butt hurt and have to need a tampon too.
Well.
To plug it up. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, it's just so, it's so, yeah, good Kate. I, I, I was just getting ready to do that. Kate put that up. That's good.
What'd she say?
Uh, Cohen versus California.
Oh.
The, the.
Well, here's the thing. I wore husky pants and when I went to high school, or went to school, okay?
Uh huh.
And people would call me, say, oh, you got Husky Kmart pants on. So, I'm here at school.
Yeah. Be better than me showing up here with no pants on.
Right. So you know.
But, uh, uh, you.
It's crazy. It's crazy. It's, you can't say nothing out there. Your freedom of speech, you don't have a freedom of speech. When a police officer can detain you, throw you in an eight by ten fucking padded cell and leave you there for thirty minutes.
Yeah. Well, a- and again, you had apologized to the guy. The guy's friends were cool with, with, with you. Let me ask you, were they, was the girlfriend and the friend, were they Hispanic?
His girlfriend was a white girl.
Okay.
And his buddy was probably biracial.
Okay.
Hispanic and white, probably.
I just didn't know, you know, I didn't know if, if they were, you know, what they were. Cause I'm just thinking, if they were like, hey, you know, we're all cool. No harm, no foul. You know, i- it sounds like this is a situation where. You, you said, I, I said something I shouldn't have said, but, and he took it a little bit further, maybe because he was. Uh, under the influence of alcohol. And maybe if he wasn't drinking, he wouldn't have done that. Who knows? But you, you never know what's going on there.
And the police went quite a bit too far.
But the police went, went further, you know, it, maybe, maybe you come down and you say, hey, you guys knocked this off, watch the game. We're gonna give you a warning, you know, grip, groom with each other, just turn and watch the game, whatever. But a- a- and, 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 alright, so, so here's, here's, I, I. Here's what I want to be very clear on. I disagree with you somewhat on the public place thing. So I'll say again, a lot like you, I will agree. A lot of tax dollars have went to this, okay? It's not just like anybody can walk in there because you need a ticket, but anybody can buy a ticket. Anybody could buy a ticket. You, you get that, the money, you can buy a ticket. You work for the money, you guys go steal the money, you panhandle the money, whatever you do. Anybody could buy a ticket to go in there. So it's not like a private place, like, it's not like you walked into this guy's house and said it.
Right.
You were in a place where there were public, that the place has been funded by tax dollars.
Correct.
And you said this, this is the issue. If there had been, if the NFL did not work with police agencies. Alright, let's say they left all the police on the outside and they say, if we have something, we'll call you. But we are hiring private security. These are NFL security. And they, they don't have guns, they don't have badges, they just walk around with radios and they, they, they're there to kind of keep the peace and. Escort people out if needed or whatever. And they don't take you to any kind of padded agency or whatever. And they come over and they say, hey. We don't like something you said, we're, we're kicking you out. They could have been perfectly within their right to do that, whether we like it or not. But it's the point when you have a government agent, which is a police officer. That comes and takes you against your will, puts you in a padded cell, uh, the padded part, puts you in a cell. You are not free to leave. You are in custodial detainment.
They placed their hands on me.
Yeah, they put their hands on you. You, they had your ID, they had your phone. You were in a cell. You could not free, were not free to move about the place.
Correct.
That's a custodial arrest, in my opinion. That, as a police officer, if I did that. I would have assumed that I, I had you under a, a custodial arrest, that you, you were detained, you're definitely detained.
Yeah.
You can be detained and not arrested. You can't be arrested and not detained. If you, if you are arrested, you're definitely detained. If you are detained, you could be working towards arrest, but not always. And, and, and I want to be very clear about this too. You can be detained and then set free and you can be technically placed under arrest and then set free. So the fact that they didn't then process you in Marion County does not mean that you were not arrested. You, in my opinion, you were not free to go at that point.
That's correct.
So.
And I asked him straight up. I asked him straight up, are you arresting me? Before he put me in that cell. He said, no, but I can. And pu- pushed me in the cell and fucking closed the door.
Yeah, but when he says no, and then he puts you in a cell and you're not free to go. What he, him saying no doesn't mean anything. At that point.
There's, there's, there's cameras. There's cameras should be in there.
So, so there's cameras. Do they have body cameras?
I don't know. He didn't have because he had on his, on a blue shirt. He didn't have on a police outfit. All he had was a badge. And, and his gun, yes.
Okay.
But everybody else was surrounding. He's the head honcho of the whole place, I guess.
Yeah, uh, uh, yeah.
For now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For now.
Okay, and so.
He cannot put his hands on me like that. I was not resisting. I was walking towards the door. And they're gonna say, oh yeah, he backed up. I took a step back so he could open the fucking door.
Door, yeah. I, again, I, and, and I have a problem with the hands, but I, I have a bigger issue with putting you. Cause you're inside of a room, they shut the door and then you go into a room from in there, correct? So you're inside, you're behind two closed doors in some area that you've never been.
I'm in a fucking jail cell.
And you weren't, yeah, 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 right. But, but.
And don't know when they're gonna come let me out because they won't respond to me. Because I'm about to piss. There's no restroom facility in that room.
Well, yeah, if you were in there for thirty-two minutes, let's say, at minute twenty-nine. You've been in there twenty-nine minutes. You could have been in there another eight hours. You could have been in there another two hours. You could have been in there another thirty minutes. You could have been in there for another second. And, and they came and let you out, you know, a couple of seconds, a couple of minutes later. But until you were let out, you don't know how long you are, are there.
Don't know how long I was gonna be there.
Were detained for that period. You were not free to go. You.
I didn't even know what score the football game was.
Yeah, they did end up winning. It was kind of a blowout.
I know, it was a blowout.
Yeah.
Oh, and then when I, when I did come out of the room.
Yeah.
I noticed over on the floor, there was a capcon. It's a blue screw, it's about this long.
Yeah.
I said, you might want to pick that capcon up down there. I said, you might want to pick that screw up because if you piss somebody off, they may use that stab you in the fucking neck with it, bud.
I think that, I do agree with your wife, like maybe there's things that you should just keep inside your brain.
But I don't. I'm not that way. Ask her, she'll tell you.
No, I'm, I don't need to ask Darla. I'm aware. Uh, what did he say when you said that?
Oh, okay, thanks.
Okay, now.
And he reached out, picked it up.
Well, that, yeah, that, that is.
I wasn't gonna touch it. I didn't want him to think I was trying to use deadly weapon on him. Yeah.
Now, there's a, there's another, there's another uh, aspect of this that I'm a little concerned with and a little worried with. So I'm not concerned with them kicking you out. They've got a right to kick you out.
They can kick me out, but they can't detain me like that.
I'm concerned with the detainment. So I'm concerned with that, okay? And I'm, I'm concerned with this document. So you've got a document here. We're gonna put this up on the screen.
Okay.
So this document says.
So this Leanne, this Leanne DeWigs, Wiggins.
DeWiggins.
She, she was the one doing the paperwork and she looked at me directly and says, that is a racial slur. I said, no, it's not, lady.
It's not a racial, a racial slur would be calling you a cracker or, or something like that. It, it would. A racial, it might be a racial statement, but it's not a racial slur.
Correct.
Very stain, strange, okay?
Yes.
But you can't be arrested for racial statements. You can't be arrested for racial slurs. Okay.
But they can kick me out, but they arrested me and detained me inside of this building.
Yes, but this is weird. But this, this thing adds another level of weirdness to it.
I didn't even read it.
What's very strange is, first off. Did William Ingles write his name on there or did the female do that? Because did he spell it? No, you wrote William.
Yes.
And spelled his name wrong and then wrote it again.
And he said, no, it's L E S, cause he wrote it on his shoulder.
Idiot not know how to spell his name? What in the hell?
I asked him. I asked him, I said, I said, William what? He said, Ingles. And I started writing, I said, is that Bill or William? He said, it's William.
It's Billy. I, I, I've known him a long time. I promise you, it's Billy.
And I said, after I wrote it, I said, is that two Ls or L E? He said, L E S.
Let me tell you, for everybody here watching, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you guys all know. And this is, this is definitely a racial slur in itself. He's a redhead. So that's the whole problem here. And let me tell you what this guy, who Billy Ingles is. Billy Ingles looks, yeah.
I'm gonna walk upstairs and get that paper real quick if I got it and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And read along with you, see what, I, I can still hear you, you can still hear me.
Yeah, you're, you're, yeah, yeah, you're, you're good. Sorry. So Billy Ingles is uh.
Don't say he's Irish.
Oh, that's a racial slur. Sure not, but I'll tell you, he looks like Howdy Doody.
Oh, don't say that. That's a racial slur.
I, I, I said it was a racial slur ahead of time. I said, Billy Ingles looks like he's the redheaded guy. Little bucktooth, got a bunch of freckles. He just needs the hat. If he had the hat, he would be not. Is it Howdy? Yeah, it's Howdy Doody. Is Howdy Doody the little puppet? Yeah, that's Bill, that's what Billy Ingles looks like. I've known him a long time, little goofy, redheaded kid.
Did you try to call him?
I, I, I have, I don't know his number. I know people that get in touch with him. So I've reached out. So I have reached out to the NFL for a statement. I, I have uh. Yeah, it's one hundred percent Billy Ingles. I prom, well, if he's changed, i- if he's changed, he might have changed.
Picture of him up. Whole picture of him up on Facebook.
Let me see here. Yeah, absolutely, yep, that's, this is, is this him? Tell me if this is him. Absolutely, looks exactly like I identified him. Is that him?
That's him.
Yep, that's him.
It's Howdy Doody, that's him.
Yeah, I could not be any closer, redhead, little freckles across the, across the bridge of the nose, h- his hands move like this. And someone's pulling the strings down, I've known this guy for a very long time, there's, there's Mr. Billy Ingles, that's, that's him. Uh, okay, uh, sorry Billy, you messed up on this one, I, I don't know what to say. Okay, um, so.
Well, first of all, I'm not John Q Public that, that don't know some of my rights and stuff like that, you know what I'm saying? I was very polite with him, I didn't cuss him, I didn't do nothing. Chris, I've been taking blood pressure medicine for the last five years, and if you haven't been able to tell a difference in me, in the last five years, people need to look back at when I was an asshole, okay?
Yeah, all right, let's move, let's, let's read this, uh, so this paper says, Mr. Barber, it was dated today's date, Lucas Oil Stadium, along with the Indianapolis Colts. Uh, I can't see that next line, can you tell us what it says?
Asking all guests to assist in creating an enjoyment and safe environment in light of the circumstances that occurred surrounding your ejection from Lucas Oil Stadium. We are requesting that you enroll in a fan code and conduct class. This four hour fan conduct class is required of guests who wish to attend Colts home games after having been asked to leave from the stadium for violating our fan conduct.
Is this like, and is this like a, um, reeducation camp?
I guess, I gotta, I gotta fucking write 5,000 sentences.
I will not mention ICE again.
I will not say ICE to a.
I will not say ICE is outside again.
Yeah, I will not say ICE may be out front again.
What is this fan code, here's the link for the class, all right, I'm going to go on here and take a look at what this link is.
They didn't tell me I had to take class, they just told me I was suspended for.
Well then, but, but you've got this paper in your hand.
Yeah, well, that's what they handed to me.
If you have any questions, please feel free to contact, so I didn't contact these people, but I will contact these people too. Uh, I'm going to read, so here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to reach out for the paperwork they filled out, I'm going to do that tomorrow, I'm going to issue a records request for that. I'm going to try to get a pic, uh, video of all the video that entailed with all of this and see what happens and, and listen.
Folks, we can't make this shit up, this is actually happened to me today.
No, it, it actually happened, yeah, believe it or not, again, listen, I probably wouldn't have said this. If I, if I were in that seat and this happened, I probably wouldn't have said that, I wouldn't have thought of to say that. Audi sometimes says things, Audi, I've known Audi a long time and Audi is not a racist person. He's not a racial person, he, Audi works construction with all different types of men, women, of people from all of the, all of the, the spectrum, everything going on. He works with everybody, he's known everybody, he's friendly, he helps people, sometimes he just says things and it's like whoops. And, and he said this, and, and you admitted, hey, I, I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have said that, I apologize if that offended you. And you apologized three times, okay?
Yes.
And, and you told the officers like, hey, I apologize, I shouldn't have said it, you know, it is, I'm, I'm done, I just want to watch the game.
I said, ask his friends, ask his girlfriend, they'll know that I apologized three times because she kept telling, he's apologized three times, drop it, you're going to get us kicked out of here.
And so he was saying, she was saying that to him.
Yes.
She was saying that to the guy.
Yes.
And when he, when she's saying that, what did he say?
That's when he was hollering, you know.
That probably is what made him mad.
And he, he did ask, I think I heard him ask his buddy, said, if I go after him, will you get my back? You gotta realize, this is a little 25 year old kid. And, and, uh, he weighed probably 135 pounds.
Right.
You know, and I'm not trying to be racist or anything like that, and he may be the baddest motherfucker out there.
Right, his weight and size doesn't have anything to do with race.
Right, well, ICE being out front does.
Well, yeah, well, there is like a racial undertone, I don't know that that's specifically a racist comment, there is a racial undertone. I, I don't know that you would have, like if I would have been there saying, would you have said that same thing?
It would only be racial undertone if the guy was not a fucking American.
Well.
He was obviously an American.
Okay, I mean, and that's yours, that's your.
American citizen.
Yeah.
He was obviously an American citizen, so why would ICE affect him?
Well, yeah, well, that, that's the argument is they're saying that it does, but because they're out there doing it, they're picking up other people, uh, that's neither here nor.
They're picking up, they're picking up illegal aliens.
I know, but there are people that are saying that they're doing more than that, so I'm not saying that, but that's what other people are saying, so, uh, okay, anyways. Anyways, they're saying that, okay, I'm trying to get this thing, I cannot get this thing pulled up. Fan conduct class NFL, I can't get it pulled up.
People need to go back and watch some of the Mickey Mouse cartoons and stuff from Nazi, when Nazi Germany was going on and stuff. And when they was, uh, putting Japanese people in prison camps and shit.
Uh, what, I can't get this thing to pull up.
It probably don't exist.
Whoa, whoa, all right, Lucas Oil Stadium and Indianapolis Colts support the effort of IMPD K9 Association. The mission of the IMPD K9 Association is to assist the IMPD dogs in handles with equipment training. As a result, $50 of the above course fee will go directly to the effort, so you, not only you got to pay for this. Oh, the class is 250 bucks.
Yeah, yeah, they can kiss my ass.
250 bucks to go to this, uh, reeducation, uh, class.
Now I gotta go back to this reeducation class if I want to go back to another football game, I guess. They didn't tell me all that shit, they just told me I had to stay off the property for 24 hours.
You that paper?
Leanne Wiggles, Wake, Wiggins, DeWiggins.
Okay.
Leanne DeWiggins, and I wrote her name on, or she wrote her name on, and then I asked the guy what his name was, and he said William Ingles. Told me his, uh, um, he was a Protection Plus, and I said, what police department you work for? And that's when he told, and I looked down at his badge, Markville.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, he retired, he's the former chief of police from Chesterfield, and he, I would assume he's a reserve now for, I would assume he's a reserve for Markville now. So for the, in, for the sole purpose of working at Protection Plus.
Protection Plus, yes.
40,000, $40 an hour to, to be down.
Yes, yes. And takes these Billy badass because he can grab people up, that's not even fucking fighting with them.
Billy Ingles badass.
Yeah.
I don't know, I can't blow that picture up that you sent for some reason, and I can't see anything, I see, I see what you sent Kate, but I can't blow it up.
What, what, what is it?
Kate sent me a message, but I can't see, I can't see what it was.
So I guess my question is, what should I do?
Well. I, I would definitely. I. I would, I would probably talk to an attorney. And, uh, see, see what goes on, I mean, you know, maybe, maybe they say there's, uh, something there, maybe there's, maybe there's not. I, I believe that this is a problem, I mean, I, I believe that this is an issue, I think that they, I think that they, they, um, went a little too far here.
Oh, I guarantee they did, all they had to do was ask me to leave and I left.
Like I said, I, I wouldn't have said it, but still saying it's not a crime. And, and, and I'm going to go the other way, and I, just because you have to do this, I'm a First Amendment purist. There could have been a person in Audi's seat that was 100% racist. And if that man would have said an actual derogatory slur, called him, you know, derogatory names for Hispanics. And said, I hope ICE is out there, I hope they pick you up. That might not have been nice, and we could have all said that person's a shitty person, but that person can't be arrested for that. Maybe they could ask them to leave and be kicked out, but you can't be arrested for being an asshole, I'm sorry. Yeah, bottom line, you, you don't get arrested. Now, I, it would be very interesting, I was talking to someone earlier, and I don't know if they want me to, to out their name or not. I was talking to someone earlier, it would be very interesting to go to the ACLU and see if the ACLU had picked this up. Because the ACLU is very liberal in their approach, they're, they're not happy with what's going on with ICE or whatnot.
They wouldn't pick it up.
But this is a First Amendment issue, and the, their, their main priority is the First Amendment issues, that, it's very possible. It would be, see, this is, this is the thing, this is, is, is what you have to do. You know, the, why people always say, oh, I can't believe that guy's the defense attorney for that rapist or that, look, you. They have to, you have to have a defense, there have, there have to be attorneys willing to represent things they don't like, because that's the, the name of the game. That's what they got in to protect, to uphold the justice system.
Yep.
So.
Well, Chris, I asked a couple politicians in Muncie that are on the Democrat side.
Okay.
And I said, is this racist? And they looked at me and said, no, it is not.
I don't, so I think that might be the wrong question, I don't think, I don't think it's a question on whether or not.
I guess I, what I said was, is this a racial slur? Because that's what they told me I was being kicked out of.
Okay, I, no, 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 yeah, I, I agree with that, it's definitely not a racial slur, that, that's stupid, the whoever, whoever, whichever one of the officers made the determination that just continue to say, this is a racial slur, you can be arrested for racial, racial slurs, that's stupid. This was not a, this might have been a racial statement, but it was not a racial slur, but furthermore, the question is, do you believe someone can be their, their liberty and their freedom taken away because of a racial slur? That's the question, and if you are someone who defends the First Amendment, you can only say, no. So, that's that.
Like I said, I'm going to contact some people, uh, see what everybody else's opinion is, because everybody's got an opinion, and I stopped at a gas station. And there's a black lady there and she opened the door for me, I said, thank you ma'am. I said, let me ask you something, I said, I just got kicked out of the football game, Indianapolis Colts football game, for telling this guy. Uh, bear watch out, ICE might be out front for you. I said, is that a racial slur? She said, no sir, it is not.
Okay, okay, so apparently, I would assume. I would assume somebody is watching this. And I want, I want to make the clarification, I don't give a shit what Audi was kicked out for, I don't care, he had the right to be kicked out, kick him out tomorrow. Let the NFL come back and kick him out the next day, kick him out next week and the week after that. When the officers who have a badge of authority and a gun take you and put you into a room behind a door and then lead you to another door and put you in an eight by 12 cell and multiple officers tell you that the reason that's happened is because you've said a racial slur. That's the issue, not the fact that he's kicked out, he can be kicked out all day long because of code of, uh, code of, uh, conduct, fan violations, uh, or, or whatever. And, and furthermore, in the state of Indiana, a threat is not a threat unless and until you say, I'm going to kick your ass if you don't do X, Y, or Z, it's not a threat, it's not saying, hey, I'm going to be outside in a few minutes, or I'll see you outside in a few minutes, that's not a threat. Those are veiled bullshit things, whatever.
That's when they put me in the, uh, that's when they put me in the cell when I said that.
Yeah, but.
Grabbed me up and he says, you're not going, you're not going to threaten, intimidate or anything of people while I'm in my.
I get it, I get it, and listen, I'm going to be very clear, I, I've always, I like Billy, I don't, I don't have a problem with Billy, I like Billy. I, and I probably, I don't know these other cops that have been involved, I, I don't know what the issue is, but I think this was a screwed up deal. Not the kicking you out, kick out, kick out all day long, kick him out all day long.
Kick me out, kick me out all day long.
The putting someone in the cell, that's the problem.
And manhandling me when I was not resisting.
That's a problem, but then the other issue of saying, well, you could be arrested for calling a cop a pig, no. You can call a cop a pig, you can flip a cop off, you can tell a cop to F themselves, absolutely, and those are not arrestable things. That's not the world we live in yet, so.
It's coming out, man.
We need to just slow our roll, that's the problem, and I'll be honest, I think this is going to be a legal issue for, uh, the NFL, Protection Plus. And all of the officers that were involved with this, possibly the Colts. But I definitely think that this, I think that this is a definite First Amendment issue, it's not the issue of being ejected.
No.
It's, it's a First Amendment and Fourth Amendment, uh, issue, man, that's.
Detaining me and not letting me use a restroom facility is, is, is the big, it put me in a cell that has no restroom facility after I told them I needed to use the restroom and make me wait 30 minutes to use the restroom. And not coming to the door until I stand up and act like I'm going to piss down the drain.
I don't even, I, I, that's funny, uh, I, I don't even care about that honestly, but that, all, all of that is just acts in further in furtherance of the fact that you were not free to leave, you were not free to go relieve yourself in a way that you would. You were not free to leave the building, you know, you don't need to be kicked out if you say, hey, I'm leaving.
Right.
But they would.
And that's what I told them, that's what I told them, I'll leave, I said, I'm going to leave, that's, that's the why you need my license, she says, because, because they're kicking you out. I said, I'll leave, you don't need my license, no, we got paperwork to do.
Definitely interesting.
Yep, I told her, I said, I'll leave, you want me to leave, I'll leave, I said, what about my money that I spent for the tickets? Oh, you'll have to get a hold of Colts on that, okay?
Well. Uh. Uh. That's really, that's really amazing, the whole thing, the whole thing is very strange, and again, I probably wouldn't have said it, whatever, I think you, you apologize for it, so it's, it's not like, it's not like, you know. Uh, you don't wish.
Conduct of fans, who gets to interpret the, the conduct of the fans? Cause somebody rips his shirt off, is that bad conduct of a fan? Can you be kicked out for that? Or is that excitement?
Yeah, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Um, running down the hallway hollering fairies, 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 is that? You know, or Cinderella, 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 is that? Because some skeptics there that had been forced to, to clean their floors for us?
I would like to know, first of all, like Kate's saying, the, the code of conduct is highly subjective. It's, the, the code.
Very much so.
The code of conduct is not criminal law, it's not, it's, it's just a subjective thing that the, I would assume the NFL, the NFL's put in place, you know? And look, the NFL has a right to, to determine the behavior inside their facilities, they have a right to be able to determine that, and again, if they would have got you from where you were and walked you to the outside, that's perfect.
Yep.
But when you're taken into a little room.
That'd be like these people walking down through there saying, the, the Raiders suck, the Raiders suck, Raiders suck balls, they ain't no good. You know?
Yeah.
And they haul them out because of conduct.
Yeah.
That's a gray area.
I, I sent a, an email, uh, off to the NFL. I'm gonna send, uh, record requests to, uh, everyone tomorrow. We'll get all of the information. We will figure out what, what goes on from here. Please keep us in touch with what you do, obviously. Keep in touch with us and let you know. Talk to an attorney.
You know, after I talked to an attorney, an attorney probably ain't gonna let me, uh, discuss too much about it.
It depends on what goes on. With it being a, with it being a first amendment case, most attorneys in that situation will generally say, well, look, I'm fighting for your first amendment issue. Uh, as long as you're not walking outside of what, what the deal is, they're normally not gonna stop you from, from chatting about the generics of the situation. You don't wanna talk about your case and cheat.
But you know, but you know as well as I know, if there's a settlement comes along across this anytime soon.
Oh, well, at that point at the end, obviously, obviously.
There will be a non disclaimer disclosure and I won't be allowed to talk about it.
Uh, depending. Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah. But I mean, that would be at the end. But yeah. So Kate said, do you plan to take the class? You're not gonna take the class?
No, they're forcing me to take the class to go down and buy tickets again.
Not until or unless they pay for the class.
Right.
Ah, good.
So I guess that's the reason they took my name. So if they scan my card in and see my name on the ticket or something again, they'll say, you can't be in here because you didn't take the class.
And that would be interesting.
When you can buy the tickets off the street.
Yeah.
And not have to have a name.
Yeah. Secret agent man.
I don't know. What should I do? Should I get a hold of an attorney? Ask them? Uh,
I would definitely talk to an attorney.
Anybody got any recommendations?
Uh, I'll talk to you offline about that, but yeah.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Listen, I, I, I hate the legal system. I know people think, yeah, right. Um, I, I hate having to be involved in that and do all that crap, but it, this is definitely one I would talk. If they would have kicked you out, I had no problem with it. If they, if they were just gonna say, hey, you're out of here, no issue. You wouldn't have liked it, but there, it would have been within their right to do it.
Right. I understand that. But to throw me in an eight by 12 padded cell and not let me go to the bathroom or let me leave because I told them, I said, I'll just leave. It's no problem. Escort me out. But they had to get my name and do the paperwork and all this shit and throw me in a padded cell.
Yeah. Mark Nicholson might be good. Mark Nicholson.
Who's Mark Nicholson?
Uh, friend of mine, a friend of, uh, a friend of, uh, a friend of mine who's an attorney.
And once you get the paperwork and you get all the shit, you're gonna see that I did not fight with them. Get the videos. I did not fight with them. And I might've raised my voice a little bit.
Yeah. Well, yeah. So I, I would have too.
But I didn't. No, when they kept telling me that was a private property. No, it's not a private property. I don't care what you say. It is public. I paid for that building. I still pay for that building. I have to buy a ticket to get in there for Colts games. But usually you can go into the convention center, which is connected to the RCA dome or the, to the, uh, Lucas Oil. You don't have to pay admission to get in there and that's still a public building.
Yeah.
It's still a public building. Just like the sheriff's department. It's a public building, but there's certain areas you can't go into without permission.
Well, I think this will be interesting to see what happens here. Uh,
And folks, you cannot make this shit up. I can't believe, I can't believe how people are turning against people like that and just, and maybe it was bad taste me saying that. Maybe it was. I apologized for it. I apologize. Hey, look, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say it. Didn't mean to, didn't mean to encroach on your, uh,
Well, and, and, and look, look, I, I wanna say this for, for anybody out there that's like, well, look, he, he wasn't, this didn't happen until after he threatened the guy. Look, the threat didn't happen until you put the two guys in a room next to each other and, and not, it wasn't even a threat. If, if it was, I'm gonna be outside. I would have, here's what I would have done. Somebody asked me earlier what I would have done. What?
The guy kept hollering, he was being racist to me. He was being racist to me. We'll take it up outside.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll be outside in a few minutes.
Somebody asked me, somebody earlier asked me what I would have done if I was in this situation. I'm gonna tell you what I would have done if I was in this situation. I would have demanded that they booked me and wrote up paperwork because I guarantee you the prosecutor's office will not file threat paperwork on someone saying, I'm going to be outside. I'll, I'll be outside in a few minutes. Or I'll see you outside in a few minutes.
That's why I asked him if he.
I get why people, I get, I get why officers will say that, uh, you know, and, and I'm not gonna say that, you know, I, I, and you're like, well, that's what he meant, you know, but you know, it sucks, but that's, you know, kind of, uh, you know, gray area, uh, shit. And so, you know, that's not a.
And that's why I asked him this. I asked him, I said, are you arresting me? He said, no, not yet, but you want me to? And then he fucking pushed me in the fucking room and slammed the door and locked it.
Well. And, and that's the, the, that was the eight by 12 cell that was already in a room that you were already in and you couldn't leave from that room. So you were like doubly detained. I mean, you, it was definitely a, in my opinion, it's a custodial arrest. You were inside of a, an eight by 12 cell that you could not walk free of. You were not free to go for a racial slur. You, this stuff started because of what they quote unquote called a racial slur, which first, number one, isn't or wasn't a racial slur. It might have been a statement that had some racial undertones, but it was not a racial slur.
Correct.
You know? Hey, you goofy redhead.
Yeah. Or you four eyed monster? How many times have you heard that in your life, Chris?
Never once.
Never once, you damn liar.
Well, uh, all right. Is that it?
That's it. I'll keep you updated. I'll be making some phone calls tomorrow. So.
Keep me posted. Let me know.
Uh, give me a call after you get offline. I'll watch the show or whatever. You may call afterwards. I can't be up too much later because I've got it at four thirty.
Okay.
All right, folks. Thanks for watching and listening and, uh, we'll keep you updated.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chris. Bye.
Yep. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that was Mr. Audi Barber. Um, ha, ha, Alva, I'm doing it just to make my grandma upset. And Billy, if he's watching. Cause Billy knows he's a redhead. Uh, okay. So that was Audi. We'll keep you posted. And listen, listen, I, I'm not saying anything different. Audi was here. I said it from, I wouldn't have said that. But you know, it is what it is. He apologized. That's, that's the thing. And, and listen, Audi can sit and say, I'm not racist or whatever. People will be like, yeah, everybody says that. I'm telling you, Audi's not racist. Audi doesn't have an issue with people who are Hispanic. Audi doesn't have a people, problem with people who are black. Audi doesn't have a problem. You know, there's, Audi doesn't care about any of that stuff. He's, he, Audi is a very, very good natured person. And, and, and he's somebody that can take the, the punches just as hard as he throws them with all of that. He, he takes, you know, people cutting down on him, carrying on. That's just, I, I don't know. Whatever. Okay. Uh, now on to the thing that everyone's like, wait, we haven't talked about Muncie in a, we, uh, we haven't talked about Muncie in a very long time. Well, what are we gonna talk about? Well, folks, the city of Muncie, uh, has their council meeting tomorrow. Less than 24 hours from now, less than 24 hours. It's 10:30 PM Eastern right now. The meeting starts tomorrow at 6:45 PM. We will be live streaming the meeting from here. The, it's already up. You can go to it. I'll put it, I'll put in this caveat. We will be live streaming the meeting as long as the city's live streaming the meeting. I guess I'll say it like that. If the city is live streaming, we will be live streaming. You'll be able to watch it. I highly, highly, highly recommend to everyone be at that meeting if you're from the city of Muncie. If you can attend, we need you there. If you cannot attend, if you cannot attend, we would love for you to watch via the live stream. Watch the live stream. Tomorrow night is supposed to be the vote on the budget. Ow. I still don't know how that's gonna roll because as we know, as Brandon Garrett finally, finally, good lord, as he finally admitted, he will not be live and present in the council meeting. Uh, sources say he will be on vacation in Mexico. And, and if we haven't had enough closely racial stuff here tonight, I, I want you all to know that there is the possibility, okay, that he will, uh, that he will be uh, in, in, in Mexico. And I want to show you because they're saying that, I, I'm looking here on the screen. They're saying that it's quite possible that he will be livestreamed in. And I want, no, no, listen. First off, so I'm gonna tell you right like this. If the city doesn't livestream, if I get there and the city is not livestreaming, but let me see. I, I'll, I'll try to see if I can do it. If I can set it up to make sure that it's done if they don't. So you will know. So even if they don't, continue watching the feed. The feed will be up six, six forty-five tomorrow. It'll be up. So, so we'll try to make sure it's done because tomorrow is gonna be a very, very, very important meeting. Now I'm hearing that Brandon's possibly gonna try to livestream from uh, where he's at in, uh, Mexico. And they've told me that they're already working on this behind the scenes to make sure that this is not screwed up, to make sure that it gets done. No, no, I'll livestream it. I'll make sure it's livestreamed. If they can't, I'll get it done. I'll, I'll use our, I'll take equipment and I'll make sure that, that we, we get it done. One way or another, it might not be the best picture, but we'll make sure we have audio at least. So we'll, we'll do what we have to do. Um, that, that'll be that. I'm hearing that they're already working to attempt to make sure that he can, uh, livestream. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I will. If, if, if they're not doing it and it's, it's gonna be a cluster, I'll make sure that's, that's what goes on. Uh, I have the, I, I have a picture here that shows what, uh, it's, it very well possibly could be like tomorrow. And I wanna, I wanna pull this up and make sure that you all see it. See it right here. I'm hearing that this is what we could see tomorrow. So live from Mexico, uh, we should have had audio on to talk about this. Um, I'm hearing that Brandon will be livestreaming, uh, live. And so this is probably what we're going to get to see. Uh, and so I'll keep you guys posted on that. Uh, no, we're not racist here. Uh, it's all in good fun. Before anybody, before anybody goes and gets, uh, the police or anything, Brandon and I are both white guys. So just be, be cool there. Uh, okay. So there is some important information. I told you guys all Friday night that there, I was like, this is, we're not gonna hear any more information. This is gonna be the end of it. Okay. Well, uh, thank God I lied. Or I thought, I, I didn't lie. They, they, yeah, I don't know. You know, you know, don't drink the water, Brando. Don't drink the water. Um, so a, a couple of things happened. Uh, Saturday? When did I get up? When did we go to Fazoli's? Uh, okay, Saturday. I'll just say it's Saturday. Saturday. Uh, District Two Counselor Nora Powell put together another document, uh, to release on social media. Nora Powell wrote, the more you know, employee raises. I've been asked to explain the discussion pertaining to salary increases at the final, uh, at the final finance committee meeting. Let me begin by saying the discussion was never about whether the city of Muncie employees deserve salary increases. And there was never any discussion or even a suggestion of removing the 2026 raises the mayor has promised our non-appointed employees. So I don't necessarily agree with Nora saying that because I mean, well, I, I agree that there was never a discussion about them not deserving it. Look, I believe they all deserve it. And while there may have not been discussion on whether, you know, we should remove it or not, I don't believe that it's good to be like, yeah, we're never gonna remove it. There might be times where you just have to do it. There just might be a time where the raises just don't come this year. And it sucks, but we all deal with that in life. Okay. Moving on, Nora says, the salary increases for 2025 are being funded with edit dollars and money that won't be available going forward. So are you listening to that? The salary increases that people are currently having from now, now from what they were last year, they are currently being funded from edit dollars and money that will not be available going forward next year. The salary increases for 2026 will be funded with edit dollars solely. How does that break down? The administration gave all employees a 5% raise for the year 2025, a 5% raise. The police and fire raises are funded using our unrestricted opioid settlement funds and the money in the general fund that is available because the council voted to eliminate funding for three appointed department head positions in hopes of freeing up money for raises. And those positions were the deputy mayor, the communications director, and the deputy controller, those three jobs. Had they not done that, there wouldn't have been enough money. So whatever. Okay. Going forward. Nora included an email sent on February 24th, 2025, in which the mayor provides the cost and funding sources for the public safety raises. Per the administration, the total amount for the 2025 police and safety raise, po, uh, police salary increase was $374,366. Jason Chafin, president for the firefighters local 1348, provided a spreadsheet on February 24th, 2025, outlining the cost for the 2025 salary increases for their members as $500,513. Why is Mr. Chafin's figure larger than the one provided by the mayor? Chafin's number includes all costs of the contract and not just the salary. Chafin's number includes all costs of the contract and not just the salary increases. Nora says that she would offer all costs of the contract and not just the salary increase, or excuse me, Nora says she would offer, the FOP has a similar cost that were factored into the total, uh, sent by the administration. But for the sake of taking things the way they were presented, we'll use the mayor's total for the FOP. The estimated total for the public safety raises in 2025 was a grand total of 874,879. In 2025, the 5% salary increase for all other employees, AFME civilian and appointed department heads is estimated at $161,078. Those are funded using economic development income tax, edit dollars. The total for 2025 raises is a grand total of police, fire, and AFME and appointed department heads of 1,035,957. Because the administration has exhausted the unrestricted opioid settlement funds, they are not an option to fund the 2026 raises. The mayor has chosen to restore funding for the appointed three, uh, well, two officials that were previously unfunded in 2025, using money from the general fund in 2026. Therefore, the council can vote to unfund those, or therefore the only money subsidizing the 2025 raises that will be available to subsidize the raises in 2026 is the 161,000 in edit dollars. That means we have money that's unaccounted for there. We, we don't know what's going to happen with it. Nora goes on, says, "The administration has negotiated a 4% salary increase for all city employees in 2026 and has reported the total cost for the city to be $839,34." The mayor announced during his press conference in August 26th that he will be subsidizing the general fund with 900,000 in edit dollars in 2026 to cover the cost of the 2026 raises. Now that you have those figures and that backstory, why was there so much discussion and what's the issue? Originally, the controller had reported, since the unrestricted opioid settlement funds would be depleted, the city would use property tax revenue increases to fund the public safety raises going forward. Since then, Mayor Ridenhour has repeatedly reported the city will see a 7% reduction in property tax revenue in 2026 due to Senate Bill One. The estimated total salary increase for 2025 and 2026 is 1,874,991. Even with the $900,000 in edit subsidies, we have a shortfall of 974,991. That must be generated to cover the cost of the raises. With opioid money gone and property tax revenue actually being reduced, being able to fund the raises promised by the administration was a concern. And 2026 budget is already razor thin with no place to make up the extra $975,000 in reductions. When members of the finance committee expressed this, the controller and the deputy controller stated, "That's fine. That's fine." The raises would be funded through the health insurance savings as stated in all of the previous posts we heard. Nora emailed the controller on 9/29, and I have a copy of this email, asking for clarification on whether the insurance savings they reported, is money available to fund other expenses? Or is it simply money we don't need to generate to pay for the health insurance bill? Those are two different figures. She asked that question of the controller in hopes that he would answer, pleading him to answer because they have to vote on Monday. So she asked that on September 29th. She also asked if the edit dollar subsidizing the 2025 raises will continue in 2026 in addition to the 900,000 promised by the mayor, or if the 900,000 is the total subsidy. However, as of 10/4 yesterday, Nora had not received a response to the question. He would not respond. He will not respond to her, period. Nora says, "What do we know? We know the city of Muncie, like cities and towns all across the state, will lose millions of dollars in property tax revenue starting in 2027 because of Senate Bill One. We know that the mayor has pledged to subsidize the general fund with 900,000 in edit dollars in both 2026 and 27. We know the city is spending 1.2 million of the general fund cash reserves or, uh, or savings to fund the 2026 budget. Here's what we don't know, and this is what's important. How will the administration pay for the salary increases promised going forward with the opioid settlement funds depleted and the general fund savings spent down to 431,000?" That's a big, big question. Here's what's killing me. I also have beyond this, an email that Nora sent on 9/25, 9/29, asking the question to the controller. And then she sent a follow-up question on Friday, asking him to answer that question. Hey, as a reminder, I ask you this and you've still not responded. Also, will you send me a copy of this report and send it to the rest of the council on the budget as of today's date? So we can have that to look at for Monday's meeting? He responded to that email with the report, but he didn't answer the question. So he got the email and he responded to part of it. But he did not, he did not respond to the question. And he's not responded as of today's date. So now not only are they not providing the information when asked, now they're not even answering questions that the council needs to further prepare themselves to vote for this. Why? Why is that happening? What, what could be the excuse? Right now we're saying he's already set that aside. So that's edit money that we already have that he's already said like that's set aside. So that's how they're going to match that apparently. So, you know, I guess we'll see. But I'm going to be at the meeting tomorrow. I'm going to ask some questions. And I would highly recommend you all to be at the meeting if you're in Muncie and you're attending. I would highly recommend you ask questions, message the mayor and ask him why he's not being, look, I'll be honest, at this point, it's too late. I don't know that there's anything that the mayor can do tomorrow to make this right. I don't think that there's anything that the mayor can do to make this right. I think, I think it's already, I think it's a done deal. I think the fact that they went into this weekend without the information that they need, in my opinion, in my opinion, they, they just, they can't pass the budget. So I don't, I don't know. You know, I, I'm, I'm really, I'm really hoping the citizens of Muncie that have considered themselves on Team Dan this whole time, I'm really hoping this is the thing that lets them know something is wrong here. That's possible. I don't think, I think he thinks he's got the world by the balls, man. I don't think he's going to. I think he realizes that I'm okay. I'm okay. So I don't know. We will be live streaming the meeting here. The, the feed is already up. So come on in and watch it. We will be going live tomorrow at the end of the meeting. It's probably going to be a late night. I don't know. It, it should be. I don't know. I'm having a hard time judging these lately. Anytime I think that it's a quick meeting, it goes long. Anytime I think it's going to be a long meeting, it gets out quick. It just depends. It just depends. It might be Audi, but you need to leave, uh, ice with, leave ice at home. Uh, that very well could be, Alva. Absolutely. Oh, oh, and my mother is going. She said she was going the other day and I said, okay, if you say it, there's nothing that you can do to get out of this. You will be there and I will be dragging her butt there. You better believe it. She will be there. She will be there. And that'll be interesting. So uh, we will be live tomorrow and we'll give you guys a breakdown of what goes on. Uh, I've got to finish off the rest of my speech tonight. A couple of my questions, a couple of my statements, a couple of points of interest. So you'll want to tune in to watch all of that. That will be starting tomorrow at 6:45 when the meeting gets out. Mom. When the meeting gets out, I will be live 15 to 20 minutes after the end of the meeting. Um, remember that little tax. It's not little. Yeah, you're talking about lit, not little, lit, lit tax. But yeah, that, they're gonna, they're going to raise that at some point. That's, that's not fixed. I mean, that's not over. You, you were right to say that last year and that is coming. It, it is, it is coming. I can promise you. You were right when you said that last year and it's still right, even though it's not happened, it will. It, it will. Uh, all right. That's going to do it for us tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for tuning in and watching. We appreciate you guys, uh, for doing that. That's, uh, fantastic. Uh, please share the show with everyone you know. Help spread the word. If you have not hit the like button, please, uh, let's see. Yeah, let's see, let's see. Hit that like button. Do us a favor and smash that. Uh, share the show with everyone you know. Hey, hey, hey. Remember, uh, episode two of the Billbury and Clark Show is out. And, uh, that is out now. You can go catch that on the other channel, The Billbury and Clark Show, if you're so interested. Uh, thank you all very much. Uh, you guys have a great rest of your evening. Have a wonderful start to the work week. It's the first day of the meetings. It's going to be hectic. Everything's going to be going on tomorrow. Uh, but we're going to wait and see what goes on with council meeting tomorrow. We will be there, God willing. God bless each and every one of you. Have a wonderful evening and we will see you tomorrow. Until then, ta ta. Goodbye.